Get even, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to Swan County Board of County Commissioners Meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty at six P M. At this time, if you please stand for an indication by Commissioner Fleming.
I follow you again, my time will come in your name. Follow your life, your name is and you all about it. Father, we come at this time of this holiday season and father, you know that you be good and be well by yourself. We pray that you bless our country, but in the midst of a pandemic, and we pray that you have mercy on us. Give us strength, prosperity, help us to do the thing of variety, your eyesight, help us to do your own here. Father, believe in and depending on you, and you trust in your name. Father, we thank you for the commissioners tonight, blessed with one by one and made you by name, getting us strength, help us in our decision making, help us to do the right thing. We need you and rely on you, we're trusting in you, and we pray that you bless our country tonight. Jesus, Jesus, may we pray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the seat. I do acknowledge that we have a crowded room here, so I would ask any county employees, men, if we have any ladies, more ladies that come in and need a seat, please let those folks sit. I greatly appreciate that, thank you. Moving ahead to our two amendments from our November twenty-fourth, December first, and December eighth, twenty twenty. Mr. Pravat has a short comment?
Yes, sir.
Pull the microphone down, please, sir.
I'd like to direct your attention to the December first board meeting minutes under the county attorney items. If you go all the way down, which is on page twenty-two, as noted. If you go all the way down to the fourth line from the bottom, I made a note that we were trying to straighten out, but that was not an easement. And the note in here again say property owners in the area to have, he says, two deed easements for. And what I said was just to have a common access point, and I just want to clarify that. So I would ask the deed easements for be straightened and just put substitute word have.
Thank you, sir, duly noted. With that being said, at this time, do I have a motion to approve these three meetings?
Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming? Seconded by Commissioner Land, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, I'm going to pull item number ten for discussion. And then also, I believe that Commissioner White has a comment before we... On the payment of invoices, I think Commissioner White and Commissioner Land, I'll let both of you speak, and then we're going to get input on legal.
I need to recuse myself for owning a third of the business that's called the store that does business with the county. It'll be check number one nine five five eight eight, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, I got Commissioner White clarified. Commissioner Land, would you clarify your statement?
Yes, sir, I took my, asking Mr. Pravat this once, but I said I was okay. But I took the ethics course last week, and I don't know if they may be added or whatnot, but I feel like to err on the side of caution. I am employed with Jim Hinton Oil Company where the county does buy fuel. The county has bought fuel there for thirty-plus years. I do not receive a commission or any compensation from that, but I am employed there. So I feel like to err on the side of caution, maybe I should just recuse myself from any invoices with Jim Hinton Oil. From now, ain't going forward, we don't have to do this every time, if there's a way to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Land. My question to you is, Mr. Pravat, I just want to clarify this for the record, and then is there a way we don't have to do this?
Yes, sir. I think with the ones that Mr. White has talked about, those are items that were done prior to the time that he came on. And therefore, I still think he needs to go ahead and be, go ahead and recuse himself and fill out another form. I think it's eight, eight or six, I can't remember. But anyway, as for Commissioner Land, right now, whatever agreement that the county has with Hinton Oil, he is, that agreement was entered into and we're performing under that agreement up to this point without change. And any of those things would be grandfathered, he would be grandfathered in on that. And there's not a, not a problem with you wrote anything.
Okay. So you said we don't have to recuse Commissioner White each time, though?
Well, if they are going to be coming up or going to continue to do business with you, that is a prohibited, that is a prohibited activity. The county will have to stop doing that.
Fair enough, answers that question, okay. You have any other questions for him on that, or you found, or you found all that?
Yeah, I'm good.
I mean, if you have, you know, any clarification, I would choose to be satisfied, I just want to leave it like that.
I mean, I knew it was, I knew it was going to be that way, so I'm good.
Okay. I had stated that we pulled item ten in just a moment for comment, but do I have a motion to approve on the consent agenda items two, three, nine, and items eleven? So we've got a motion by Commissioner Hell, seconded by Commissioner White, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number ten, just Commissioner White.
Just, just a question, why is the county, I know it's CARES Act money, but why is the county purchasing computers for Live? I mean, I don't understand how that CARES money works, so I'm just asking the question.
Mr. Harris, can you?
The city of Live could not get a distribution of CARES Act funding, the county does. And under CARES Act guidance, they allow us to provide or cover expenses to CARES Act funds for municipalities before we choose to do so. In this particular case, we're going to have quite a bit of CARES Act funding to cover a lot of expenses.
You okay with that? All right. So at this time, do I have a motion to approve item number ten of the consent agenda? Got a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Land, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we'll go to item number twelve, time specifically. It says, "At six oh five P M. or similar after, as the matter can be heard, hold the public hearing to consider adoption of an old rich payment to C P A twenty dash oh two, an application by concept development Inc. and concept construction of North Florida Inc. Incorporated, authorized agent for fueled properties LLC to amend the future land use map for the comprehensive plan by changing the land abuse classification from agricultural one to rural activity center." Mr. Meeks, at this time, give me just one second. At this time, we will open this public hearing, and I will ask county attorney to swear on any persons that are here who wish to testify or have any comments on this at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anybody thinks they may have something to say here, would you please stand and be sworn? Okay, and staff, do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you God?
Stand up.
All right, thank you very much. When you approach the podium, if you would, state your full name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. At this time, Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before you tonight is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number C P A twenty dash oh two. It is a small-scale future land use map amendment to change the future land use on a parcel of property from agricultural one to rural activity center. It's been a couple of years ago now that we had done a text amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to include a future land use category of rural activity center to accommodate for commercial needs in the rural areas of the county that were a little bit larger than our neighborhood commercials that we find with convenience stores. Seems that the Dollar General and things like that have fit that market of the type of business that would be located in those rural activity centers, and we've had some previous applications and heard the board approve in both sites. The general location for this property is at the northwest intersection of twenty-seven and County Road one thirty-seven in section twenty-one, Township Six South, range fifteen east, Swan County, Florida. It's the intent to change the future land use of the subject property for the placement of a Dollar General retail store. Access from proposed site would be off of County Road one thirty-seven, the access point being approximately four hundred feet north of the intersection of twenty-seven and one thirty-seven. Just, it reminds you that the, should the land use classification and zoning ultimately be adopted by the board, the site can go through the site development plan review process prior to the issue of the building permits. So, you know, when you, when you look at a conceptual layout that you have attached to the packet of information, that doesn't necessarily box them in to, to that layout. We change the land use and zoning, and then usually after that, we'll have a site development plan approval that comes to us prior to the issuance of permits. This application with the one after that is kind of, they go hand in hand. The first step is to amend the land use map of the county. You have in your packet of information a proposed ordinance for adoption of the board, so chooses to adopt the ordinance. The application went before our planning and zoning board for an advisory decision to the commission at our last month's meeting in November, and the advisory from the planning and zoning board was motion for approval to the Board of County Commissioners. You have representatives from concept that are present to answer any questions that the board may have. Their attorney, Mr. Reeves, is also present. If there's anything that I've left out that he wants to cover, then I would certainly welcome him to do so. At this time, I don't have anything else to add, and I'll then fire all files to the rest.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. At this time, do I have any questions from the board?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I stepped on your toes there just a minute. L D R College receipt to composite exhibit number one, the application and the remainder of the file. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Do I have any questions or comments from the board or Mr. Meeks at this time? Seeing at this time, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf, if this be the time?
Please come forward, yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, my name is George T. Reeves. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Davis, Nick, Reeves, and Browning in Madison. We're here representing the applicant in this case. I've got with me Mr. Matt Kason and Ms. Holly White, and they are the technical people that understand all these processes and what's going to happen out there. And so really, we don't have much to add to what Mr. Meeks has already said and what your planning and zoning board have already approved this. And of course, that's a recommendation of this board. But we're just here to answer any questions and to be a resource to the board or the public if anyone has any questions. We're real proud of the project. It's going to bring a, or we intend to bring a Dollar General into that south, roughly southeastern part of the county where they're at in the lot. Right now, we think the people in that part of the county are going to enjoy the store. We're just, you know, we're happy to be here, and we would ask your approval and are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. If I have anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing at this time, I'm going to close public comment. I know the board have any special comments?
No, sir.
All right, that's good. At this time, I, I would ask, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, file both. Just to clarify with Mr. Pravat, we had two different items there, but it was about the same. Does that satisfy both of them?
No, sir, it doesn't. We still have to move on to item number, the second item.
Well, I know Mr. Meeks has spoke to, that he's been talking to.
I did make brief mention of, you know, normally the first step would be to approve the land use, and then the following step would be to approve the zoning. I don't have any other information to add to it, it's just basically a different map that would be changed. The information is still the same when you're writing.
Hearing Mr. Meeks' comments, do I have any questions for him? At this time, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land?
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, file both.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I might, just briefly, can we mention what the, the number was? That would be L D R twenty dash zero two, you know, for the record there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close up, if you want to start. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending this evening. At this time, we'll move on to item number fourteen, discuss the possible board action. Mr. Brent reimbursing agreement, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I think you received a copy of a letter that I had sent to Brent. This is an ongoing issue. This is associated with the rail crossing that we're trying to build at the Catalent Site to connect U S ninety to one hundred seventy-fifth. Brent has an older fiber optic line that runs through there. In their words, it is unprotected. They did not run it in conduits, they didn't do anything to protect it, and they installed it years ago. So they decided that we need to now protect it. Or actually, they're going to do the work, bill us for it. Early on, they indicated that they wanted us to sign an agreement to pay them forty-five thousand dollars for that service. In my letter that you received, I informed them that we could have the work done for just over fourteen thousand dollars and that we could pay the inspector and inspector of their choosing, and we knew that we could save money doing that. Well, they rejected that offer. They rejected that offer and indicated that the contractor that we have got, or one of the two contractors we've got quotes from is not an approved contractor on their list. So they've decided that they still want to charge us forty-five thousand dollars to do this job that we could accomplish for less than fifteen. We really don't hold any cards against this. But more importantly, a few years ago, I asked the state to give us three hundred thousand dollars to build that road out there, and that's what we're trying to do. D O T is administering those funds, and they're chomping at the bit for us to get started. So they are anticipating that we're going to have to go ahead and sign this agreement today. Let me be fair and say that Brent later in my communication said that there's this estimate that they might, it might not be that high. At the same time, you'll recognize in that agreement that it may be higher. So we're being asked to sign an agreement that we really don't have a lot to say yet. But we have to go ahead and get this road project started right away.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, I'd ask the board...
Well, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why? Do we have to do anything?
Yes, we do. D O T requires us to certify that all of the utility companies that signed off on what we're doing out there. And they, that's what they've been requiring about is where are we with our utility certification? They know what we've been dealing with. I mean, they, they readily agree that this is probably a whole lot more than it should cost doing. For the public's benefit, I'm just going to tell you, all they're going to do is dig this line up. It's probably no more than three feet deep. It's one hundred and twenty feet long. And they're going to take some split E B C pipe and put on either side of this fiber optic line, and then they're going to put a piece of split galvanized pipe over that. My estimate is that it will take, at best, two days. So it isn't a complicated task, I expect. But we do have to, in this particular case, pay them to do what they say has to be done to protect their life.
I ask for more discussion from the board at this time.
Sounds like the guys.
Mr. Chairman, is that, is that line running just east and west along the tracks there, is that?
In that particular area, it does. They told me early on how far it goes, I can't remember, moved to California and where it goes.
Okay, sure.
But the only part I was concerned with is that one hundred and twenty feet. And it's fairly expensive to do.
That's a big, pretty expensive run all the way to California.
You're right.
Hundred and twenty feet, fifty thousand.
Yeah, you're right about that. I told them that myself and the commissioner could volunteer to go out there and dig it up by hand. We could put the light on, we could probably finish in a few days.
When you want to start?
Yeah. They, they didn't, they didn't budge. I'm sure they would have sent me a letter and said that we're on approved contract.
It's kind of like a satellite bill, I mean, if you want to watch it, you pay it. You don't call them, they don't, they don't want to talk about the application at the board rate.
Just don't make you feel any better.
Nah, it should not.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, especially in this matter, I mean, this is a, this is a tough one, but, gentlemen, what's the pleasure, board? Do I have a motion?
So what do we, I guess you want to do?
I have a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Land, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say there's a little bit of lighting on the top. In my conversations with our C D D G grant administrator, we had a conference call, I don't remember, a few months ago. We actually have asked them to add this to the scope of services that could be an allowable reimbursement request from grant funds. We're still waiting to hear back from them, so it's possible at this point that they would agree to reimburse that as a expense. So is there the rail crossing project?
We would like to ask you to work hard on that, get that for us in months.
It's actually in writing right now, we're waiting for their response.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, gentlemen, on that. Moving ahead to item number fifteen, have our twenty twenty-one annual committee of appointments. Just to clarify for the record, for the public, the board members have about eighteen roughly committees and boards that we have to serve on outside of this, outside of the Board of County Commissioners. So every year this comes up, or each one of us has four or five boards that we're responsible to be involved with. At this time, Commissioner White has asked for some discussion on that. Did you want to?
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Oh.
It was probably most of you got the wrong one. We already took care of what I wanted.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. So do I have anyone else wishing to discuss these, these board committees that we're responsible for? Seeing, we have a consensus that we're fine with it, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know if anything else we need to add. Does anyone from the board have anything they would like to add tonight regarding COVID nineteen? Any questions, comments? See, we can move ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I told Mr. Pravat earlier about this, and I wish he would explain it to the public tonight. Concerning about the pandemic, about the two fifty, about two fifty-two, that code that behind it, you would...
I think he's, 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 he's talking about referring to a renewal, a seven-day renewal we have to do.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And that's why we have to have a meeting every week right now instead of... So we've asked Mr. Pravat, and Mr. Harris has been working to try to find some answers. If there's any way that we can do it without having to have a board meeting, have like everybody in it. It, it takes a lot of time for that meeting, for five minutes to go in there, what is required. But I'm going to let Mr. Pravat speak to that and clarify.
Honestly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Honestly, I'd bring a statute coming with you, but under the, if I look at the, the typical renewal that we do, this part is section two fifty-two, I think it's thirty-six.
Point three eight.
Point three eight, thank you. Okay. But if you look at the section down there, yeah, under section five, there, you, there, you can only, you don't have a choice. Whenever you're going to be able to have a local state of emergency, and if you're going to have in any way or fashion that you may seek some type of reimbursement from either the state, federal government, you know, for any disaster preparedness or anything like that, that you have to go and renew this every seven days. There are different provisions that, you know, that the state has to deal with in the overall process, but on a county basis, we're stuck at seven days.
I guess my only comment I have on it is, most of the time when we do an emergency order, it has to do with you have a hurricane, or you had a tornado, or you had some, you know, event that was an emergency that comes and passes. I mean, this is a nationwide, this isn't Swan County, I mean, that's, that's kind of what it is. I would think that they would address that at some point. I mean, if every, you're telling me every county in the country has to do what we're doing, I mean, it just, I don't mind coming everybody. None of us, I mean, we're here to serve the people of Swan County, and we don't mind doing it, but it does cost money for us to come, it costs money for, for Mr. Baker's office to be here. And I mean, it, it costs money to, to do that ten minutes every, every week, and I, I just, that's uncomfortable.
Sir, I don't know, I think, Mr. Chairman, originally, whenever they were adopting these emergency management things, you know, everybody was anticipating, just like you said, you know, we've got a hurricane, we're going to be in here for seven, you know, seven days, maybe two weeks, maybe as long as a month, you know, trying to get the cleanup done and being able to direct, you know, those types of things. It is an unusual circumstance. I think there's, there's been a lot of talk, I know it lasted, during the last legislative session, you know, of changing all of these requirements, you know, so that they could, you know, space them out. Folks were looking to, you know, make a declaration that sixty days, you know, okay, well, then you could do that, you know, with your regular meetings, you know, that type of thing. But they didn't, the, the problem again became is if you had a sixty day, when you're only talking about a four-day window for a hurricane, you know, you know, that type of thing.
I guess, really, our only thing that we could maybe do about this minimum is we had the delegation come in January nineteenth, and we maybe bring it to our state representatives and just ask them the question and see if they take it higher up from us.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to Representative Brandon about this, I guess, over a month ago, the same conversation. He said that he was going to ask some questions about it, but felt like it had, it was pretty much set the way that it is unless the legislature proposes a change going forward, which I think would be a good opportunity to have a legislative delegation be, and I'm sure that other counties would jump right in on this because everyone's dealing with the same thing. I would like to say that I reached out to five other counties. Three of them I'm waiting to hear back from, two of them I just got some information. You know, here's one from Orange County, their declaration says that no state of local emergency declared pursuant to the Board of Emergency Management Act may contend for more than seven days unless renewed. So they've been doing theirs every seven days, and Ellis County's been doing essentially the same thing. I spoke to one county administrator, he said they're having to do the same thing. But he indicated it's because they are planning to seek all of the reimbursement through those funds if they can. That's the significance of this. If you drop out, then that funding goes away.
Right.
So that's why we're doing it. I've got an attorney general opinion here that Mr. Pravat had actually sent regarding two fifty-two point thirty-eight. The question was asked if the attorney general in a county that's declared a local emergency pursuant to section two fifty-two point thirty-eight, Florida statutes, must that declaration be renewed every seven days? And the response says that two fifty-two sets forth the emergency management powers to look at subdivisions above statute limits, a state of emergency declared locally to seven days. It recognizes that such a state of emergency may be extended in seven-day increments. Where the legislature has prescribed the manner in which a thing is to be done, it acts as a prohibition against it being done any other way. Accordingly, time of the opinion that when a county is declared a state of local emergency pursuant to section two fifty-two point thirty-eight, Florida statutes, wishes to extend that declaration, such declaration must be renewed every seven days. That just tells us that's, we know where we are.
Right.
But I think the only hope at this point is to, in fact, I spoke to another senator as well. I spoke to a senator about the same issue probably a few months ago. He indicated that he thinks the legislature would have to take action about a change to this. So I really believe that's going to be our best bet. We've never been in this situation before, with all the storms that come and go. Renewed maybe once or twice, and we've never been in these waters before, so just... I'm just going to hope we can get to the end of this and get our vaccine. Commissioner White, Commissioner Land has said that they would take it personally to the board and make sure it goes good, and then we're going to... And wait thirty days. Right, right, and we'll follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's why I wanted to bring this out for the public to hear. But so many times, you act like I'm here with you. What is it? It's all right. Something that we ought to do.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because I made a note about, still my mind on that, like, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Mr. Harris, Mr. Pravat, clarify. Uh, at this time, we have item number seventeen, additional agenda items. I have, uh, adoption of a resolution approving Swan County local litigation strategy. Let me just go over real quick what this is, where everyone knows for the record. Whereas Swan County Board is subject to natural hazards such as floods, hurricanes, tropical storms, sun colds, wildfires, drought, heat waves, winter storms, tornadoes, et cetera, and these hazards affect the health and property of the citizens of Swan County as well as its economic viability. And whereas hazard mitigation consists of actions such as structural enhancements, planning, code enforcement, and responsible development taken to permanently reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to people and property from the effects of the hazards. So, basically, we have a, there has to be, uh, Ms. Davis has told me it has to be updated every five years, and this happens to be fifth year. And this is, uh, she's brought this, and that's what it consists of, and this will be in the county office if any of the board members or anyone from the public wishes to review. So, I have that here, and, uh, with what I discussed, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I have a motion.
To approve this resolution. I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Flynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign the sign. Motion carries. At the gentleman. Uh, one other item I have on, uh, additional items is authorize county staff to assist in placement of the post office drop box in front of the county jail. Uh, Mr. Harris, you wanna bring us up to speed on that real quick?
Yes, sir. Everyone knows the post office is relocated and created a bit of a situation for all the county offices and some of the businesses in the immediate area because they want more drop box there. So, um, what's been communicated to us that if we can assist them in finding suitable location, um, they'll put a box in that immediate area so that our offices can use it and other businesses. I met with the sheriff out there, I think it was yesterday, and we discussed the location and the work for everyone. All it requires is a four-up, three-foot-by-three-foot concrete pad and, uh, that install the box, we just authorized it.
Any questions for Mr. Harris or county staff? With that being said, do I have a motion to approve authorization of county staff to assist in placement?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign the sign. Motion carries. At the gentleman. At this time, I have asked Mr. Barry Baker, to see an audience, please come to the podium. He has a couple of comments he wants to come for clarification. Welcome, sir.
Hi. It's a pleasure being here tonight. Um, I, I know last, last week is where there was some discussion over the minutes and stuff, and, I, I just wanted, because it's where the, uh, it's the two new ones were here, and I can't remember if y'all were or not. We, we were having some issues a couple of years ago. It's where that, that, uh, there were some lawsuits that were being raised. It's a thing, there were eighty-eight lawsuits, and it's where that they were just taking four or five counties at a time as they marched through the court. And so, it's where that we had to, uh, at that time, we had all the agenda packets, we had, uh, all the agreements and minutes, everything else on, on the, the website, and we had to remove a lot of that stuff until we could, uh, first of all, see where the courts were gonna land with some of that. And then, uh, second of all, after we found out where they were gonna land, having to, uh, to get a vendor to, to take in the help as we build a new website. And so, uh, I apologize. It's where we, we do have, um, we do have a mechanism that we have internally that would, uh, that would give each of you an, an opportunity to take in and do word searches, and, uh, it's where that that was available to the general public. Hopefully, within the next two to three months, is where we have that regular, where we can have that also available to, to the general public as well, again, as we had in the past. Uh, but it's where that, that Eric wanted to also make some comments on that, just to kind of give you a little bit of, a history of, of what those are. But it's where that, that, I, I would tell you that, that for you or the general public, if you, if you don't have that capability, if you get with us, it's where our office will work with you any way that we can. And, uh, it's where that, that Eric can get with y'all and, and give you instructions on how to be able to access that, because you absolutely need to, to have that ability to do that. So, it's where that, that if you give it to Eric to log in, it's where we can, uh, we can work to accomplish that. If, if, uh, if you have issues with that, and it's where the, let us know, and it's where that we can, we can help with those things as well, so. Uh, with that, Eric, uh, if you just want, Eric has been doing this for a long, long time. Uh, it's where that, uh, he actually has been, uh, our, our county, we have been requested to, to help with some of the other counties as well as we, uh, have tried to approach this. And so, with that, I'll let Eric just make a few comments and, um, so it's the biggest thing. It's just wanted to make sure that I'll give you the air service as well, but.
I won't spend three hours talking about this, if I'm not. Uh, first off, thanks for logging to those in the public that were here last week that discussed the minutes. I know there's some questions that came up about the minutes and what not, uh, what they are and what they're not. Uh, so I'm just gonna go into a little bit of, uh, discussion, not just for the commissioners, but also the public and those who might be on video watching at some point in the future, about what minutes are, what they're not. Uh, chapter two eighty, I used to do that. Chapter two eighty-six point zero one requires that minutes be taken of meetings, including county commission meetings and whatever else is around there, and that they also be made available for public inspection. And not only that, the chapter twenty-eight point twelve dictates the clerk's office will be the one taking those minutes, and they shall attend the meetings, um, among a lot of other meetings. So, so what are minutes? Well, the dictionaries define it. The attorney general's opinions over the last years have defined minutes as, quote, "a summarized record of the proceedings at a meeting," or, quote, "brief notes," or, quote, "notes of transactions." Uh, there's been over forty years, attorney general's opinions about what minutes are and what they're not, and they have made it clear, especially, uh, A G O opinion number eighty-two dash forty-seven, that minutes are not verbatim transcripts. They record all that has been done, not all that is said. Uh, that being explained, um, when I talk to people, when I explain to people about what minutes are, I say they're minutes, not hours. They're brief, they're short. They don't go into all the details. Um, if you want the details, you want the verbatim transcript, that's where you get a court reporter. And y'all have, uh, over the years, from time to time, whether it's the county commission, transit authority, other, uh, different boards, you have executive sessions where you bring in the, the county attorney or whichever attorney you've got, and you have a court reporter that takes verbatim minutes, uh, verbatim, uh, verbatim meeting minutes. That, that's different than minutes. Uh, our minutes are permanent records. Transcripts and other things are not permanent records. The minutes are permanent records. You can go to our office, clerk's office, and go back a hundred and fifty-plus years and see the county commission minutes. I will warn you that they are not as long as what we do today, but they are there as such as they are. Now, that being said, with minutes, there are two different kinds of minutes. There's what's called action minutes, and there's what's called summary minutes. I believe the action minutes were mentioned briefly last week, but action minutes only describe what happened. You know, so-and-so motion, so-and-so approved to do this. That's it. Uh, they're very short. I've actually got some copies of action minutes from last week's meeting. If you'll note in your agenda that the packet you just got today and approved, I think it was five pages long. The action minutes of that same meeting would be about a page and a half. And so, that kind of gives you the difference between what action minutes are and what we do, which are called summary minutes. Uh, summary minutes give all that information, plus a lot of the discussion. I never did everything. Some of the permanent discussion, those kinds of things. Again, they are a summary. That's what we've been doing for the past twenty-five years or so that I've been doing personally and others. Another thing to point out, uh, just for you and, and the public, the clerk's office, Logan and I specifically, have over ten boards that we take minutes for. The county commission have just one of many of them. Uh, that adds up over the year to eighty-plus meetings that we take minutes for every year. Again, uh, most of these are public, I mean, they're all public, most of them are permanent records, and half of them are county commission meetings. But we've got over eighty. Uh, now, now, uh, not only are there the minutes, but we do, as you can see right here, videotape for the county commission and for the public, the meetings. Not every minute, not every, a set of meetings is videotaped. Some of our boards have requested that they not be, and that's up to them. It's not required by the Florida statutes. It's suggested that it's not required, so some we take, uh, video of, some we don't. But regardless of that, those are available on the internet, YouTube. You can go online, whether you're a commissioner, whether you're the public, if you've got internet access, you can jump online, go to YouTube, type in Swan County Board of County Commissioners in this case, and you can find all the meetings that we have up there for the last five-plus years. Now, that's something to point out. Some people don't always realize that, but our records are not always permanent. Minutes are permanent records. We keep them all the time. Videos only have to be kept two years. We usually keep them five years to help y'all and to help the public. Uh, same thing goes for support documentation, what we call the agenda packet, agenda packet. Those only have to be kept two years. So, what we do is we keep them, the county office sends them to us, we convert them so they are word searchable. If it was typed in there, you can search it. We store them on our servers. The county office has access. As Barry mentioned, the public did have access, and they will have access again to those records in the next few months, and you can search them until they admit their retention in two years, and then we destroy them. Uh, we also keep things like the rec, uh, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Those are a lot longer. Usually, we keep them, we, we got them a hundred years back in some cases. Uh, so we've got those. Now, the issue was broached last week about verbatim transcripts. Again, that, that's different than minutes. It's different than what we do in the clerk's office. Um, I believe it was pointed out by a couple of members of the public that they can get expensive. You have to either hire somebody to do it, or you have to, to look into automated software. About six months ago, we actually did look into automated software, uh, where Rainy had sent us some information, and, uh, we'd been looking on our own anyway. And we looked into it, and what we found out was, number one, it costs thousands of dollars to do. The initial installation, thousands of dollars. Then there was the annual maintenance cost. Beyond that, when we talked to some of the vendors, they said, "You have to totally replace your A D system." You've got to totally revamp it, totally replace it. It's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, so we looked at those numbers, and we talked amongst ourselves and said, "We're going through coronavirus right now. We don't have that kind of financial, uh, money to, 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 to push that right now." So, we haven't even recommended to y'all this time, because it's just, it's not enough bang for the buck. You spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars on something that you don't usually need. And I say that to add a couple of different things with transcripts. Again, our minutes are, last week's minutes were five pages. If you were able to transcript, and, and we did when we were doing our testing, we ran a forty-minute video. We did a transcript of it. When it was timestamped, where it would tell you every few seconds, at, at three seconds this happened, six seconds this happened, a forty-minute meeting video was eighty pages long. If you took out the timestamp, there was another one that we did as a test. It was a two-hour meeting. It was a hundred pages long without the timestamp. So, you've got a massive amount of documentation that we would have to store, we would have to keep, and we'd have to provide to others. Yeah, again, it's not something that's required by Florida statutes. Um, however, if you still wanted, some folks were bringing up about transcripts, you actually have access to them right now. It's not something that we have had a lot of questions about, to be honest. But if you go on YouTube, there's something called closed caption. There is a button you can push. We'd be glad to show you how to get to it, and you can click on it and either watch it as you're watching the video, or you can download the transcripts of the meetings. So, they are available. We don't provide them per se, but they are available to not only county commission, but also the public. Having said that, we're from the South. Automated software has a lot of trouble, and we picked that up when we were testing too. Y'all, it's just, they're interesting sometimes when you read the transcripts. I just want to give you that warning if you decide to do that, but we would be glad to show you how to do that. Um, yeah, we are here, as Barry said, we're here to provide for you, we're here to provide for the public, and whatever we can do within our statutory obligations, we'd be glad to help y'all. So, do I have any questions?
I guess you're saying y'all doesn't come across right.
Y'all doesn't come up very well, no. No. Sometimes the prayers. It's funny just watching the first few minutes of the video when you try to do the transcript. You're not sure what we're praying for in two sometimes. It's just, it's, it's very crazy, but there is a transcript of sorts available now for everybody. We're glad to answer any other questions.
I appreciate the Christ for the minutes.
Well, I mean, you know, I, from time to time, I've had to do it and talk to different people in various formats, and, uh, it came up last week in public meetings. I figured we should talk about it and, and show, share all of y'all's wants, and also the public and those who are watching our videos, so.
I have any questions for Mr. Bush, for this time, for the board?
Glad they don't ask me to talk.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, I will, uh, open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone from the public wishing to speak tonight? It doesn't matter the item. You're welcome to come and speak. Seeing none, I will close the comment. And we will go into closing comments for the scene. Mr. Pravat, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, um, I wanted to bring y'all up to speed just a little bit. Uh, we haven't mentioned it a while about the opiate, uh, litigation. Um, you know, it's been counted in the news over the past several months, that there've been some resolutions, some bankruptcies, you know, and, uh, as they move forward. And as part of what we've been doing and participating in the, uh, M D L action in Ohio, the class action, um, they're, they're gonna be the lead, and the federal court there will be the lead agency of trying to get all of these settlements all together, and then being able to disperse them all to, back to, back to the states. So, we're, we've kind of reached the point right now where these things are happening. Have they reached any of the agreements? Really, no. Have they reached any dollar amounts? Really, no. But what we're trying to do is come up with a formula to be able to resolve it. And once it gets from the federal level to the states, uh, what I was concerned about was with, once it gets to the states, how can, how can we get money down to Swan County? So, what, what we've been talking about, um, with the attorney general's office is, uh, the, at least the folks representing us, is that there are gonna be three different types of payments that were gonna be made, you know, under there, or this is what they're proposing. Be a, a type of payment that would go directly to the cities and counties as local government entities. Right now, that number would be, again, no dollar figure, but it would just be whatever the amount is, it'd be about fifteen percent. Uh, then there'd be what they call a regional funding mechanism, which would be over, uh, an eighteen-year period of time, that the monies that are received would be spread out and paid. And this is where the little contentiousness is, because the third level of funding then is, uh, whatever's left goes to the state. So, but right now, we're at a me, at a mechanism where the, the, all the counties and cities in Florida are talking with the attorney general, and so this period of time between one and eighteen years, what types of percentages of that money will be, uh, available to counties and cities? Well, basically, the, the, the state wants to do a plan that is broken up into five different sections from forty percent down to thirty percent over the eighteen-year period of time, and the counties and cities want to do it in six different sections, you know, over the period of time. And so, it's really not a lot of, you know, difference, but, um, for the, it would, the counties are proposing to front-load more of it, uh, up, more money to the counties and cities upfront to be able to utilize some of those things. And I just mentioned, you know, two, uh, this, uh, because I still want to express back to their, our, our county, uh, city brother, you know, that, you know, we, we would like to continue with that uploading format as we continue to negotiate, you know, toward the final, um, thing there. So, I'd just kind of like to get a consensus from y'all, uh, that I could just pass that on to them. And I apologize for having to bring it up tonight, but the email I got on Friday afternoon said they would like to hear something back from me before December sixteenth, so.
So, do you need anything from us at this time?
Yeah, really just a consensus that we can, you know, continue moving forward to support, uh, the counties and, and cities, you know, for the, for those funded.
Have a consensus as well. How good that, you'd have a consensus, Mr. Pravat?
Thank you, sir.
But, uh, I would like to discuss, when you say you have brief comments, um, we'll talk about that afterwards.
Mr. Stapleton, you know, when you give a lawyer a microphone, it's hard to take it away.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Harris, any closing comments?
Uh, yes, I have a brief comment. I got a call this evening about an opportunity, um, and I'm not sure who this opportunity is for, but we are members of the National Association of Counties, and we receive points for our membership, I guess, and, uh, there is a scholarship program, and we need to let them know by Friday, before Friday, if we're interested in participating. Uh, this is a High Performance Leadership Academy. It's a twelve-week program. Um, it's online, requires about five hours per week. It retails at twenty-five. It retails at twenty-five hundred dollars, but they're willing to give us a position for someone to take the twelve-week, twelve-week online leadership with Officer Verben, it takes only three to five hours a week to complete, and it's the file of leadership insight from General Colin Powell, Marshal Goldsmith, county leaders, and Fortune 500 CEOs. So I'm sharing that with you in such a vein that you, I mean, if you want to attend this or participate in it yourselves.
We can nominate Commissioner Land?
Hey.
We can do that. But I just need to know.
Thank you for it.
Unfortunately, it's gonna, I mean, it starts beginning of January, I believe, and then it's for twelve weeks, so it isn't, I think you can go plug in whenever you want to. I mean, there are specified days that you have to participate in this, which I think makes it a big comfort for people that are in the business at any time. So I'm just informing you.
I don't, I don't doubt at all that it's not a good program, I just think the environment that we're in right now, it's hard for any of us to spend that much time. I would like to get past COVID and then circle back around or something like that, if we would be, I don't know.
Thoughts? Okay. I'm good with that. I do have one other request.
The previous act- Just to clarify, I don't want to speak for the board now. I'm just speaking for myself. Does anybody else have any additional comments?
No. Good. Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on the previous action regarding Sprint, I would ask that the board consider a motion to authorize the release of that forty-five thousand dollar payment for Sprint, because that's an upfront expense that we have to pay. That is unusual, we've had to do it in the past with railroad and other ones. But otherwise, we'll be waiting for that check, and I can't execute that agreement to get it out of here soon enough at this point.
What happens if it goes over that, though?
If it goes over the forty-five thousand? They'll, they won't hesitate to send a stamp.
I understand that. I'm saying that a political pain is-
Well, that portion, we would have to wait and bring it back. But this initial has to go with you, Brian.
At this time, do I have a motion to support Mr. Harris' comments on Sprint and the payment there of forty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, my question is-
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Harris? Thank you, sir. Commissioner White, closing comments?
Any of you have a chance, you need to go down to Brantford and see Little Greenway, they look down there, it's, it's pretty, pretty nice. I got volunteered to be Santa Claus last weekend, so I got to see it. So all of you can go see too.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Land, closing comments?
Um, no, sir, I just want to thank the, the Chamber and county and city for the Christmas on the Square. I was there for the Christmas lady and the snow lees, and my, my wife drove me up there three different times, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but it was a really nice event, a lot of folks from surrounding areas come, and a lot of good things there. So I just want to thank everyone for the work that they do there. Chamber does a good job with it, and I know that us in the city did you in and helped too, so just want to thank them for that.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fleming? I'm going to be brief. I'd just like to thank, I am all the people that came out tonight, stopped during our meeting. I think it's important to come know that county government is all about. I even see someone that I'm very familiar with, she's here tonight in my classroom. Glad to see her here tonight, Cheryl Land Jackson. And I have two constituents in the house, also Mr. Stefan Blue, he's a retired law enforcement officer, state officer, and a general contractor, it's Maury Perkins here tonight. I want to thank them and everybody that came to the meeting today. Thanks, it's good. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hale?
Yes, sir, I got just a small thing here, but I know you guys have heard me mention in the past how much we appreciate our county staff. I, you know, you guys have to find out, obviously being new commissioners, how much we really rely on them. But there's some, I try to mention it once a month, and I think I fell short last month, but I put together a little list, I just, some of the folks that don't want to go and mention that, like our custodial workers, we all mentioned about COVID-19, I mean, those folks are really working hard to keep the public offices clean. They do a lot of disinfecting to keep us safe, and I just want to mention them. Also, our park maintenance workers, they keep those fields looking nice out there all the time. And I can promise you guys, as you move on, you'll talk with every one of these folks, and then sometimes the ones that you don't talk to are the ones doing the work, and that's the ones I always like to point out, because sometimes I think they go overlooked, but I just don't want to overlook anybody. Our firefighter, very minute, sheriff, cert team, police department, those folks, I'm sure we can't forget. And go back to like Public Works, our receptionist, and I think back, and sometimes you have to take the calls out there and then call us commissioner, and sometimes they get on the wrong end of the stick, but I appreciate what they do. Also, our library, the library aides, they really help and assist with our children with any things that they may have going on for school or personal. And I mentioned Public Works, I mean, those are the guys, most of us talk to on a daily basis out there. So I appreciate them, the roads they fix, the problems that we have. I mean, those calls are daily. And another one, I noticed this the other day, when I went to one of the, our Garber Street neighbors. It was early in the morning, I got there, the gates wasn't open yet, but that guy was in there and he was working, and he was getting it done. So definitely want to mention those guys as well. So, but you know, I just challenged myself, challenged our board and our public to acknowledge them, and I think most of all, I want to thank our community, our citizens, because all these people I just mentioned, that, that would be possible without them. And with that, I think we do have one more meeting before Christmas, so I'll wait till then to wish everybody Merry Christmas. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. And I think the whole board supports and agrees with your comments when it comes to county employees and what it takes to run a nine-to-five million dollar business. I mean, that's what we're doing, trying to be very productive and also grateful at the same time for all the employees. And I mean, I do appreciate you bringing it up today because in case we don't have to get to speak about it, I want to make sure everyone, everyone of those folks know how much we appreciate them.
Same with school, school board.
You know, the teachers and, and we think we've had a time this year, let's think about these teachers trying to teach school, and these children that can't get there, or some are sick, and then just on and on. I, I do want to clarify a comment that I made, I don't want anyone to leave here tonight, and I may lie to COVID-19 when I was kissing with these two commissioners, we was discussing it before the meeting about the vaccine coming out, and I'm very grateful for that. And we was just discussing who would be the first to take it. And that's, that's what that was about, it, I'm not making lies, I've had, all of us has had family, friends, some of us has had it, and there's people that's, that's not lived through it. So it's very serious, I'm very grateful for the people in this country, the businesses, pharmaceutical companies that have, have worked on something that takes years to do, and they've done it in eight to nine months, and have a vaccine that's, you know, ninety-plus percent successful. That's, that's what, that's what America is. That's greatest country in the world, regardless of what's happening and what, what the dynamics and the politics are, it's, we still live in the greatest country in the world, and[1780.82]